We don't have anything there.
We don't have anything, man.
Call this meeting of the Huron School Board to order. I'll ask the business manager to note the role. And I'll ask everybody to rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those who don't already know, I have a cold today and so, and my voice kind of gave out of me this weekend, so I'm gonna turn it over to Garrett and have him chair the meeting so I can do less talking.
All right, and being that David is sick, I'm gonna lysol the gavel here quick so I don't get sick. All right, moving into item number four, adoption of the agenda. We have new agendas placed in front of us today. We've got some additions to the consent agenda, some additional grant funding. And we also have an executive session at the end of this that's scheduled. And unless somebody wants to disagree with me, I would say we would strike that from the agenda. We have nothing to talk about as far as teacher negotiations go until the legislature comes back with funding numbers for us, so. With that, I guess I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda, striking the executive session.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number five, going in dates to remember, March 11th and 12th is the Huron Middle School Parent Teacher Conferences from 4:00 to 7:15. March 15th is spring break, there's no school. March 25th is the next Board of Education meeting at 5:30 PM here in the IPC. March 26th is the HHS Parent Teacher Conferences from 5:30 to 8:45. April 1st and 2nd is the 4th and 5th Grade Parent Teacher Conferences from 3:30 to 6:45. April 3rd's an early release. April 4th and 11th are kindergarten and first grade parent teacher conferences from 3:30 to 6:45. And there are some additional days to remember on the agenda. Moving into item number six, community input for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody here for community input for items not on the agenda? Nobody's running forward, so we'll move to item seven, conflict disclosures and consideration of waivers. We have nothing for that. Item number eight, consent agenda. The superintendent of schools recommends approval of the following. Approval and/or correction of minutes of previous meetings. Consideration and approval of bills. Approval and/or correction of the financial report. Board approval of new hires, as was previously mentioned. Classified personnel, substitute teachers, classroom aides, and volunteers must be approved in order to be covered by our workers' compensation plan. We have six new hires. Jasmine Newton, a title para educator at the HMS. Tyann Buttonhagen, assistant volleyball coach. Hannah Scoughton, title para educator at Buchanan K-1 Center. Amanda Schumaker, food service assistant cook at HMS. Janelle Demming, food service at Madison Satellite. And Amber Brewer, substitute teacher. We've got one contract for board approval. Benjamin Hobcat, a science teacher at HHS. We have two resignations for board approval. Chantel Seicot, a substitute bus driver. And Samara Contras, an ESL para educator at the HHS. We have a request to accept bid for a robotic welding lab. Acknowledge that the State Department of Legislative Audit has accepted the audit report for the financial year-end June 30th of 2018. We have a few grant funding applications here. We've got one from Huron Destination Imagination for $1,000 to the Walmart Community Grant. We've got one from the Buchanan K-1 Center for $395 to the HYLC. We've got one from the HMS Quiz Bowl for $500 to the HYLC. We've got one for Destination Imagination to Northwest Energy for $2,000. We have another one from Destination Imagination to HYLC for $500. We have one from the Huron Music Parents to the Huron Community Foundation for $1,500. And we have another one from the Huron Music Parents to the HYLC for $500. We have another grant here, but we were going to move that one into new business, item number P, so we can discuss that one there in length. And then also, we have a request for approval of open enrollment. We have an open enrollment request, OE 2018-13 for board approval. The consent agenda may be approved with one motion. However, if any board member wishes to separate an additional item, he or she may do so. So I'm seeking action on consent.
Move to approve the consent agenda as you just presented it?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent as presented. All those in favor?
Without item P.
Without item P, right. Item P has been removed.
As you presented it.
All those in favor of approving, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. I will now turn it over to Mr. Nebelsek as he celebrates successes in the district.
Okay, we have several things going on this time of year. And I think I'm current on what we've already talked about and what we haven't. First of all, congratulations to Chipper Schillingstadt, Tyson Lean, and Taj Jenkins-Harris and Gabe Rigger being selected to the 2018-2019 All ESD Wrestling Team. I believe that that is new since the last time. I believe that we covered the region wrestling and the state wrestling last time at our meeting. And so again, nice season and congratulations to those young people. Want to congratulate Matt Bush and his wife Debbie on the birth of their granddaughters Kylie Hope and Kylie Joy. Want to congratulate the Huron Tiger Boys Basketball Team on their win over the Watertown Arrows as they advance to this weekend's tournament in Rapid City. Want to congratulate Beth Foss and Gordon Foss on the birth of their grandson, Jack Noble. Want to spend some time on all the names of those involved with our five Destination Imagination teams who competed at the Southeast Regional at Tri Valley this past Saturday. I'm reading from information that I received from Mrs. Jensen, that they were exemplary example of what in Huron Tigers are all about. At the middle level, Tou Ray, Lizzie Heine, Chloe Culver, and I-3 were third place in the Challenge Game On. The high school level, Brayley Walls, Kayden Caudell, Brendan Matthews, Elizabeth Estrada, Chloe Watson, Ai Ai Wei, and Katie Schoenfelder were third place in the Medical Mystery Fine Arts. The middle level, Henry Peterbaugh, Paul Mu, and Sean Myers were first place in the DI Challenge on Target. At the middle level, Hannah Schoenfelder, Tyler Cronin, TJ Lean, Nick Florrie, Chelsea Patack, and Aurora Dreyer were first place in the DI Challenge Monster Effects for Engineering. At the elementary level, James Wheeler, Josh Olivo, Sebastian Olivo, Teague Lean, Brian Patack, Tucker McKeel were second place in the Monster Effects for Engineering. The middle level Service Learning Team will have competed today at Groton by the time we get to these announcements. And the Rising Stars K-2 Team and Monster Effects Elementary Team will compete in Box Elder, the Western Regional on March 16th this Saturday. First and second place teams will advance to the South Dakota Tournament on March 30th. Congratulations to each team member and their managers. Amy Pa, Leah Gosh, Josh Lean, Bradley Patack, Kelly Walker, Colleen and David Jensen. Congratulations to Haven Heinz, Kobe Bush, and Teagan Evers for being named to the ESDO Conference Basketball Team for 2018-19. The following thank yous are all written by our Activities Director. And we second all of his thoughts here on the incredible state tournament that they just hosted. I read from this, like to publicly thank all the volunteers, adults, and students who worked the state big girls basketball tournament. We have a group of retirees who volunteer to take tickets, sell, and supervise postseason games in the arena that ends up saving the district a lot of money. We have many Huron High students who volunteer their time to sell programs and T-shirts. Like to thank all the staff members and students who work the tournament. Their professionalism and friendliness makes Huron special when we host state events. And finally, a big thank you to Darla Helpcat, Reedy Berg, and Charlie Warner for their long hours preparation for the event that started several weeks ago. The arenas never look better and it does not go unnoticed by visitors. These three go above and beyond what is expected because they have so much pride to make the events in the arena the best for the teams and spectators. I would add to that, behind the scenes, a lot of work by Rex Savell and his crew to make sure that we kept moving snow and making things available for everyone as we went through this. And thank you to the people in Kelly's office for all of the financial transactions that need to take place in order for the tournament to take place. So to Mr. Roddard and all those who worked with him, we have a lot to be proud of. And I thank all of them. Mr. Bishaw?
Thank you, Mr. Nebelsek. Moving into reports to the board. Our first one is Classified Employee of the Month presented by Carol Tompkins. Receiving the award is Amanda Schumacher, Food Service Assistant Cook at Huron Middle School.
Good evening, everybody. Please help me honor Amanda Schumacher as our Food Service Classified Employee of the Month. Food Service has many deserving recipients over the years for this honor. No one has been thoroughly written about by their peers as much as Amanda has. This is a testament to her being truly so deserving of this honor. The comments that I received about Amanda were lengthy and many. Amanda's the kind of employee that all establishments wish they had. Rare work ethic, efficient, level-headed, calm in all situations, dependable, confident, thinks her duties through, hardworking, knows what to do, always has a warm hug for you, great smile for a great person. Glad she's on my team. Amanda has a lot of common sense, stickler for details, brings any discrepancies to someone's attention, always uses proper care when dealing with students with special dietary needs, willing to help others, doesn't complain, knows her business, great sense of humor, which she uses to smooth over all stressful moments. Extremely knowledgeable about food safety, and Amanda is simply a great asset to our team. Congratulations, Amanda, on being the first Food Service Classified Employee of the Month.
Thank you, Carol, and thank you, Amanda. Our next report is on Huron Head Start.
Hello, I'm Angela Waldner from Huron Head Start. I'm the family service coordinator over there, so similar to social work is what I deal with. I deal with all the families and enrolling them. We currently enroll 68 children in our program. We do have a waitlist of about 35 kids. So far throughout the year, I've added seven kids from our waitlist. Two of those children moved out of state. Three children are in foster care, in foster homes in Huron, and were placed back with their families. So that's a success for us when we can see them reunited with their families, but then unfortunately, they did leave our area. One student had health issues that did not allow him to go to school at this time. And one parent decided that their child was not ready for school right now. So we, as soon as we have an opening, we turn to that waitlist and see what we can do to get kids enrolled. We do also work with the preschool partnership in the Huron area. So when our waitlist does get lengthy like that, I do collaborate with them on how we can get those kids into any of the other openings in the Huron area for preschool and possibly provide some tuition assistance for them. We go through a screening process that's similar to what all the kindergartners in the district go through at the beginning of the school year. After that process with our kiddos, if there's any concerns that come up at that time, we talk with the parents and then collaborate with Marissa and Lori through Buchanan Preschool to see if there's additional services that the children will qualify for. So they are provided some of those services in our building. If it's just speech, they will come out and do speech in our building. If they're on a more extensive IEP, they do get some time in our building. And then we bus them over to Buchanan or Buchanan buses them to us depending on when they are at preschool so that they're getting all the services that they do need. If we have any building maintenance issues, we touch base with Rex. Rex sends Chad out to the rescue most of the time to see what's going on, or Rex himself comes to save us. Just reading my notes here.
Well, and then as for the building that we have, we either use it for a classroom. We have four classrooms. The lunchroom, office space, or storage for either food services or for the classroom supplies. And we currently employ 17 people. Two bus drivers, two teachers, two noon assistants, two teacher assistants, two cooks. And then Angela and I are both out of that office. We recently did some upgrading to the playground, and that was for some of our kids. We don't have the necessary ability to keep them all safe. Some of them, they need an enclosed fence. So when we put that in there, it gave us the opportunity to let everybody go outside. And from doing that, we saw less behaviors in the classroom, which helped teachers. It was just an all-around nice thing for them to keep all 68 kids outside and safe. We also have a shed that we're going to store equipment in when the weather gets nice and we get rid of some of the snow to store it out there. And that way, teachers can just pull stuff out instead of storing it right now in our lunchroom. Besides that, we're hoping in the near future to maybe expand and put a couple more classrooms in there that would give us more ability to serve more children in the community from our waitlist. Is kind of coming down the ropes, so.
Along with our screening process that we put our children through, when we take applications, which we are taking applications right now for next school year already, parents sign a general release. So at the end of the year, before we wrap up for the summer, I touch base with the sped preschool to see if there's any of those children already being served on IEPs so that we kind of know that coming in. Once we get back up and running in August, we collaborate again with them, making sure that if we do have a kid that is receiving services over there, if they're going to be an AM or PM kid, so we can work their Head Start schedule around that and collaborate with buses. If the child is absent at Head Start, and that's where they started their day and we're going to be going on to Buchanan, we send an email over or shoot them a phone call to let them know that their child won't be coming for their afternoon session. And it works both ways. If they have a kid that's going to be there first and then coming to us, they call us and let us know that that kiddo won't be getting off the bus, so. Other than that, it's a great space for what we do.
We're so lucky to have it.
We are part of the Northeast-South Dakota Head Start is what our area encompasses. So like Sisseton, Webster, Mowbridge, Aberdeen, Redfield, Northwestern, Webster-Wilma area. And when we do screening, we all kind of move around to all those different sites and help. And every year, I hear the comment that they're so jealous of the space that we get since we are in a building that was designed for school spaces. So we're fortunate to have the space, that's for sure. Any questions?
We're glad to have somebody using that facility.
I have a question. What's the biggest thing stopping you from having more kids come in? Is there a funding issue to it, or is it simply a space issue?
It's not a space. It's more of our guidelines through Head Start. Currently, we have to wait. Some of it is funding. We have to get the additional funding for kids, but some of it is just waiting for them to meet our guidelines that we have. And Angela, with the applications and everything, she has guidelines that qualify them to get into Head Start. So she knows a little bit more about that than I do.
And program-wide, we can serve 380 kids. Each classroom is set up to serve 17 per session so that we stay in ratio with what the Head Start guidelines.
Yeah, and that's one to 10. So one adult to 10 kids is what we have to stay into.
Amy was talking a little bit about adding on. With that would be maybe possibly longer days. Right now, our teachers are very fortunate and have one space where they do kind of part of their activities, and then they move across the hallway where more of the toys and that sort of stuff is for their learning. We would utilize each classroom with having 17 kids in each classroom, but possibly extending to full day. And that's kind of on a national level that they're talking about that. A few sites in the state of South Dakota have moved to all-day preschool, and it hasn't been mandated yet, so we're just kind of putting a hold on that for the time being.
Do you have quite a bit of staff turnover, or is the staff fairly consistent?
Here, in the last couple of years, we have had a lot of turnover. And that seems to be difficult, give and take, depending on the position. For teachers, we have been lucky to get people to come and interview. So it just seems to be whatever comes open and whatever we can kind of.
Right. We've had a lot of people retiring with Head Start, though. So they're not necessarily leaving for any other reason than they're done. They can retire. So then filling those spots. And otherwise, I would say the majority of our staff at the Huron Center is unfortunately nearing that retirement age in the next five to 10 years. We keep telling them we're not going to let them leave, but we know that that's kind of coming down our pipeline for the Huron District, anyway.
And what percentage of the, and I may have missed this, but what percentage of the students are bused in each day compared to delivered by parents? Does it all come by bus? How does that work?
We offer them, everybody can get picked up by the bus service. Some parents do opt to bring them, and we encourage them like through the year, yep, you want to bring your kid, but we need to get them used to the bus in case something should happen. And most parents, as the seasons change, are more opt to send them on the bus as opposed to get in their car and bring them when it's really cold, which is great. But they do have the option, most of them do. I think we maybe right now have four that parents bring them.
And is the busing to their, to the?
Right, to their door, yep. There's no bus stop, so we pick them right up at their house or daycare, so.
And do you try to use the darn school superintendent on whether you're open or not open, or what have you been doing on snow days?
Before, we had been. And then our director, because we have a new director, gave us the opportunity, since we pick them up right at their house, to let us, if we feel like we can have a late start so it gets a little warmer, we can run if public school is closed. We haven't had a lot of that here recently, so we've been fortunate. Because parents do call, they're like, okay, Huron's closed, are we having school?
Okay.
And most of the time, we say no.
Okay.
Because it has been so cold.
Just curious.
Yep.
Thank you.
Do you have any other further questions? If not, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
We will now be moving into our land report. Mr. Van Berkom?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. This report will probably be brief. It's mostly a few Senate bills that I'm going to report on tonight. As all the House bills I had been reporting on were all killed in my last report. So I'll start with Senate Bill 1, which was going to create the extraordinary, the Special Ed Extraordinary Cost Oversight Board. It is on the governor's desk, it passed both houses, and she may have signed it by now. I hadn't had a chance to update some of these today, so that will be happening. Senate Bill 2 was the bill that was going to increase the amount of money in the extraordinary, the Special Education Extraordinary Cost Fund. It had been amended to link it to the index factor, and this bill was killed. So currently, it's $4 million in the fund, and it looks like that's where it's going to stay. So they're going to not do anything about it this year. And Senate Bill 3 was creating the Special Ed Task Force. It was amended and passed, but instead of calling it a task force, they're going to call it a Special Education Interim Legislative Committee. I don't know exactly what that means. It's a lot of the others' stuff, and it's the same, the makeup of it. They're just giving it a different name, but. giving it a different name, but anyway, it's on the governor's desk. Senate Bill Eighty-Six was the bill that was going to repeal the Partridge Amendment. This bill got hog-housed in the House and then killed, so it's dead. Senate Bill One Seventy-Nine is the big one we're going to be watching in the next few days. This is the one that sets the target teacher salary, and it sets a new target teacher salary of $50,360.26. It's the, it's a 2.5% increase from last year. I don't really have high hopes right now that the .7 of one-time money they gave us last year is going to be backfilled. This bill passed the Senate. It was amended in the House. The House changed one of the mill levies, so now it has to go back to conference with the Senate. That, I would say, in the next several days, we'll know how this is all going to shake down, and then we'll know what we have for funding for the next year. Unless there's any questions or comments, that's all I have for now. There's going to be a flurry of activity in the next several days as they come to a close.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, Tim.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving into our Business Managers' Report. Mr. Kristofferson.
Tonight, I just have a report on the General Fund. We're 67% of the way through this year's budget at the end of March, or at the end of February, excuse me. To date, the district has collected $11,359,000, which is 56% of our budgeted revenue as compared to $11,145,000 at this time last year. To date, the district has expended $11,188,000, or 55% of our budget expenditures, compared to $10,735,000, or 55% at this point last year, so things are pretty much on track.
All right, anybody have any questions for Kelly? Thank you. Next up will be our Superintendent's Report. Mr. Nebelsek.
Okay, thank you. Several things that have been worked on since the last time, and Kelly, I just wanted to confirm April 9th is the election.
Yes.
Right? The Governmental Affairs Committee has been working on a proposed date for the forum, and I'm not sure that that has been finalized, but when it is, you'll receive an invitation from the, from the chamber, and that'll determine if all three people or who is and is not available for that 9:00 a.m. meeting. The two of you and Mr. Palmquist are out here, and he is in the audience, and so we'll keep everyone informed if, in fact, there is a gathering by the, by the Governmental Affairs Committee. But that has to precede that April 9th election, so I'll keep everyone informed on that. We received word today that our district-wide accreditation date has been set for the onsite review, which will be next November 6th, and that information puts into motion a lot of things, including significant training for administrators, which will take place on April 25th this year in Mitchell. And so we will learn from there all of the things that we need to have in place and ready to go for the accreditation review, which will take place next November 6th. The admin team right now is working on some preliminary work for budgets, and part of it has to do with notification that some of our federal grants are going down, and if they're going down and we have people that are tied, their salaries are tied to those grants, then we're going to have to prioritize which programs we're able to offer based on the grant money that is available. And so right now, that has taken up quite a bit of time, and I'll try to keep the board informed as we move forward with employees, and we've tried to keep employees informed as to how that may or may not affect them. What I would rather do is have more people informed so they're aware than to have someone caught off-guard at the end as far as how those grant dollars affect things. And then the final thing that is topical to this week is that I'd like everyone to be very in tune with the weather for Wednesday and Thursday. We already do not have school on Friday as a calendar date that was already arranged, and Callahan News put out a bulletin this afternoon that said winter storm area focusing on Huron, and showed us right in the middle of that with the National Weather Service. We listened on the radio today, they are, they are projecting a lot of unknown. Right now, the validity of the projections right now is only at about 25%. Sometimes they give us information and it's already at 90%. Right now, it's at 25%, and so there's a lot of unknown. I would just say that people need to stay in tune, because if the combination of multiple inches of moisture combines with 60 mile an hour winds, and that, and that forecast becomes more valid in the next 24 to 36 hours, that people need to be in tune to what we may or may need to do in order to get through this week. It's been quite a winter. I'm open to any questions.
Got one. What's the, considered, anything about sending the basketball team out to Rapid City?
Yes, all of the, all of the teams, it's my understanding that all of the teams, boys and girls, are leaving on Tuesday in order to be out there prior to this, because the event goes on whether you can attend or not. And I made the administrative decision earlier today that, that we're going to send the cheerleaders, and Mr. Roder's vehicle will also leave on Tuesday, so we've got an administrator on that side of the state in case we get caught. Right now, I plan to go out Wednesday morning, because our high school principals are not available, but we'll have to see what the weather looks like by Tuesday night, Wednesday morning. But right now, we should have all of our participants and the Activities Director on that side of the state before it all hits.
Is there a chartered student bus that goes out there?
There is not, not when we've gone across the state. Yep.
Okay. Any?
Oh, that's a good question. I'll check that in a second. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask if there are any further questions.
I have a question about accreditation.
You were presenting tonight. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
You mentioned that we're starting accreditation. We went through that recently, within the last few years, I thought. How long did that accreditation last for?
This one's actually, the state tries to target every five years. We should have had the accreditation during this year. They have fallen behind in trying to get all of the work done, so they moved ours until next year. Now, in addition to this, we have the Advanced Ed Accreditation, which we went back to just high school.
Okay.
Okay? But the, this one is K-12 and does not involve Advanced Ed. So this is really a compliance review, and so they review things like our evaluations. They review things like our drills. They have reviewed things like if we're in compliance with all of the different attendance regulations and, and how we do our record-keeping, and do we have the information on the shelves for parent information and all of that. And so we'll, I can answer a lot of that after I go to the training on April 25.
Now, I think my question was, we went through accreditation a few years ago with Advanced Ed just for the high school.
Actually, at that time, we were K-12.
Okay.
And we did both, because it used to be that if you're Advanced Ed, that covered everything, and the state severed that about eight or nine years ago. So we have done both, where we went through the state accreditation and we did the Advanced Ed. And, and that was K-12, the last time we experienced that.
And so the reason we do the Advanced Ed Accreditation is just to maintain that higher standard of accreditation?
That's correct. That is exactly correct. Okay? And then, we had invited these two wonderful young people to make their presentation to us last time, and it did not get on the formal agenda, but they are here and ready to go. And so I think that before we go into any of our other work, I think it, I think it would be excellent to be part of our report session. And when we do that, the entire audience can stay, and we will move out there, Mr. Bischof, and the video has to go off because of copyright laws.
Right.
Okay?
All right, well, that will end Mr. Nebelsek's report, but we will go into Jasmine and, Jasmine and Reese, you have separate presentations?
Yeah.
Okay. And who's going to go first? So we need to have the camera stop rolling until these presentations are over.
Probably supposed to take a short recess while we do that, and then.
Okay, all right. Well, we will take a short recess then while we have presentations here.